Call the meeting in order, ma'am. Kirk, if you would, call the roll, please.
Mr. Buckner?
Here.
Reverend Campbell?
Here.
Mr. Hood?
Here.
Mayor Jones?
Here.
Mr. Mayo?
Here.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Here.
Mr. Saunders?
Here.
Mr. Vogler?
Here.
Mr. Whittle?
Here.
Before we have our invocation, I just want to let the city manager know tonight, on your birthday, we invited all of these people to help you celebrate your birthday. We want to ask everyone to stand for the invocation, followed by the pledge of allegiance. Dr. Miller?
And it's also his fifth anniversary, sixth anniversary, of being city manager.
What a gift.
Yeah. Let us pray. Lord, we no longer live in the Garden of Eden. We have not been good stewards of our land. There are wildfires, floods, tornadoes, hurricanes, global warming, storm after storm. Many have perished. We have starvation, we have plagues, pestilence, war after war. All these trials and more have come our way. But as sure as you have placed these calamities on the earth before us, you've also given us the means to make peace, to save our towns and cities. We have the ability to produce vaccines from what you have supplied us on this earth. And like the lower animals, we are also given the ability to make logical decisions, to take that vaccine, to choose peace instead of war, to build our homes on the rock, not on the sand. Yet we do not always make the logical choice, the right choice, and we often pay for our poor judgment. Help us, Lord, to steer the right course through the storm, to save our neighbors and our loved ones, to come through to victory and peace. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Want to say good evening to those of you who are here in the chambers and those of you who are viewing River City TV, Facebook, and at home. Again, we thank you for sharing the city manager's birthday with us tonight. We have a special proclamation tonight, two actually, with the persons from Haven of the Danville Region, please come forward at this time. Persons from Haven of, from the Danville Region, please come forward at this time. Want to say good evening to you all. Whereas Sexual Assault Awareness Month calls attention to the fact that sexual violence is widespread and impacts every person in this community. Sexual assault is a nationwide public health crisis, but the public is not fully aware of the magnitude of the problem, but the primary reason that most victims never disclose. And whereas women, sexual assault statistics reveal some extremely disturbing facts. One out of every six American women has been the victim of an attempted or completed rape in her lifetime, and out of that group, an estimated 70 women commit suicide daily in the United States, directly as a result of the sexual violence. Sexual abuse is not limited, and not only limited, to females. 25% of male sexual assault victims will experience their first sexual assault before their 10 years of age, and whereas statistics show that one in 10 children will be sexually abused before their 18th birthday. About one in seven girls and one in 25 boys will be sexually abused before they turn 18. And whereas we must work together to educate our community about sexual violence prevention, supporting survivors, and speaking out against harmful attitudes and actions, prevention is possible when everyone gets involved. The first step is increasing education awareness and community involvement. Now there, I for Alonzo Jones and members of the Danville City Council do hereby proclaim April 2022 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month in the city of Danville, and we encourage every residence to join, advocate, and support service programs in our city of Danville, Virginia, in the belief that all community members must be part of the solution to end sexual violence. Get involved by educating our community about sexual violence prevention and supporting survivors. Given under my hand is 5th day of April 2022. Please accept this and please give some comments, please. Don't y'all all run at the same time.
Good evening to everyone. Haven of the Danville Region this morning, we appreciate, this afternoon, we appreciate the council for allowing us the proclamation that you've given us. Me, myself, Marilyn Waller, the sexual assault advocate for Haven of the Danville, along with my executive director, Mrs. Dietrich Betts, and our victim administrative specialist, Mrs. Ashley Corbett, we thank you, but we just want our community to understand that sexual violence can have psychological, emotional, and physical effects on survivors. These effects aren't always easy to deal with, but with the right help and support, our survivors can be survivors and they can overcome, and we empower them through our works. Haven is that support for the city of Danville and Pennsylvania County. We offer survivor crisis intervention, counseling, hospital accompaniment, court accompaniment, and advocacy. Haven needs your support to continue our fight to identify and raise awareness of sexual assault. Someone may say, what are the signs of sexual violence? Withdrawal from friends or usual activities, change in behavior such as aggressiveness, anger, hostility, or hyperactivity, or change in school or work performance, depression, anxiety, or unusual fears, or a sudden loss of self-confidence, apparent lack of supervision, frequency and absences from school or from work. So we ask that the city of Danville, along with Pennsylvania County and our city council, we ask that you continue to help us to raise awareness of the issues that we have in hopes that Haven can one day help all of our survivors to overcome sexual violence as well as domestic violence. We thank you on this afternoon, this evening.
I say this each time that you come. By chance, if someone is watching tonight or viewing this, and they want to get in touch with you and they're having this issue, how do they get in touch with you?
If someone wants to get in touch with us, they can call. We have 24-hour hotline services. We have crisis advocates on those services for 24/7, seven days a week, and they can dial 434-483-5482, and one of our advocates will make sure to help and assist as much as best possible.
Give that number one more time, please. Again, thank you so much for all the work that you do. I think Councilman Vogler, you had a, I want to, you had a comment?
Oh, no, sir.
All right. Well, thank you all so much for all what you all do.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Ask that Sheila Williamson Branch will come from the Danville Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta. She didn't come along. Say good evening to you all as well. Whereas the Danville Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated was chartered on April the 6th, 1946, as the Gamma Gamma Sigma Chapter, with nine distinguished local charter members who included Clara Huffler Clark, Carrie H. Coleman, Signora L. Collins, Irene Gordon, Vergey Hopson, Virginia Mac Johnson, Hortense Person Martin, Elizabeth Holland Trent, and Fanny C. Owens is the only living charter member. And whereas the chapter with a service area of city of Danville, Pennsylvania County, Halifax County, Caswell County continues in the sorority founder's footsteps to promote the five-point programmatic thrust of educational development, economic development, political awareness and involvement, physical and mental health and international awareness and involvement. And whereas most recently, the Danville Alumni Chapter donated in 95 MAs to the first responders at the Danville Fire Department, the Blairs Fire and Rescue Department, Turbavia Fire and Rescue Department, Halifax County Rescue Squad, North Halifax Volunteer Fire Department, and Caswell County Emergency Service. And whereas the Danville Alumni Chapter collected and donated over 800 cases of food to Haven of the Danville Region, God Storehouse, and Tri-County Community Action Agency's Food Pantry in Halifax County. And whereas the Danville Alumni Chapter prepared and donated 100 cuddle bags for foster care children in Danville, Pennsylvania County, Halifax County, Caswell County. And whereas the Danville Alumni Chapter, local membership of 97 college-educated women, has assumed the charge of ensuring its communities receive well-rounded support through various events and programs, including financial literacy, homeownership, and entrepreneurship, academic excellence through its Delta Academy, Embodied, Delta Gyms, Jabberwock, International Prince and Princess Pageants, and supporting awareness of international history, issues, people, and cultural experiences. And whereas the chapter annually awards $10,000 in scholarships to public high school seniors, council, you can clap right there. Chapter continuously annually award $10,000 in scholarships to public high school seniors, continue their postgraduate education, and provides financial and volunteer support for community organizations such as the Danville Life Saving Crew, American Heart Association, House of Hope, Danville Cancer Society and Association, Boys and Girls Club, Big Brothers Big Sisters, NAACP, I see Tommy Bennett smiling, God Storehouse, Haven Salvation Army, God's Pit Crew, and the list goes on and on. And whereas the Danville Alumni Chapter Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated is celebrating 76 years of service, and its members continue to be magnificent examples of servant leaders with an uncompromising commitment to the community served. Now therefore, Alonzo Jones and members of the Danville City Council of the city of Danville, Virginia, do hereby proudly recognize the Danville Alumni Chapter Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated, and we sincerely express our appreciation to the chapter on its 76th anniversary on April the 6th, 2022, given under my hand this 5th day, April 2022. Now I'm going to ask you to come forward, I'm going to present this to you, but council is going to come forward, and we'll get pictures with you all, and then you feel free to speak. Is that okay? Council, come and join me, please. All of you all come and join us.
Y'all in there, Ron? Are you looking this way? You ready?
Mayor Alonzo Jones, member of the city council, our city manager Ken Larkin, happy birthday, deputy city manager Earl Reynolds, and others present and those watching tonight. Again, we say good evening. I am Sheila Williamson Branch, the chapter president of the Danville Alumni Chapter. Our vice president is Tondra Roberts Brooks, and our immediate past president is Mary Williamson. And again, we do thank you all for recognizing the Danville Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated. Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated was founded in 1913 by 22 founders on the campus of Howard University. We are very proud of our history, and we remain strong in continuing commitment to serve this community with programs implemented and focused on our sorority's five-point programmatic thrust that's been previously mentioned. We are all over the United States with well over 300,000-plus members and in seven regions within the United States and chapters located in the Arabian Gulf, the Bahamas, Bermuda, Canada, Jamaica, Japan, Germany, the Republic of Korea, West Africa, and the Virgin Islands. The Danville Alumni Chapter is located here in Danville and has been here since serving the service areas of Danville, Pennsylvania County, Halifax County, and Caswell County for well over 75 years, since its inception on April the 6th, 1946. And again, that was with nine ambitious women that were dedicated, that who chartered the chapter then as Gamma Gamma Sigma. And as educators, those Delta women wanted to charter a chapter to promote the Delta's five-point programmatic thrust and to increase cultural enrichment for the youth in our service areas. And again, Fanny Owens, and some of us do know her, is our remaining charter member. Again, it is very, very gratifying that the Danville Alumni Chapter is celebrating 76 years of public service. We are so excited and honored to be recognized this evening and still be a pillar in this community that we serve, that serve our children, adults, and the overall needs of the communities that we do serve. We are growing in our capacity, our determination, and our strength, and we look forward to continuing our commitment to sisterhood, scholarship, service, and social action for the years to come. For more information, feel free to email us at DACDSTPresident2021@gmail.com, or you could visit our website at www.dacdelta-sigma-theta.org. And we also have a Facebook page. Again, we say thank you.
Well, let me just say thank you all for all that, what you all do for our community, and I'll speak on behalf of council. One of the things that I did not mention, those of you know Sheila is our city treasurer and ran for election on that, but there are many of your members I saw when it came up here that serves on many boards and commissions in Danville and Pennsylvania County. Would you please stand? I saw utility commission members, I saw persons from Pennsylvania County and Danville. All so much for your service. Thank you so much. Thank you. Councilman Campbell?
I have to see the thunder from another council, that's why you're mayor. But we do recognize the Delta.
Let's make sure his mic is on. Is your mic on? Let's make sure your mic is on. Try it again. Try it again.
That's good.
Hit the red one, and I hit the blue one.
There you go.
That's what happens when you become a little bit old. But we do appreciate and we honor the Sigma Theta Sorority. They imply what a lady should be like in our community, the way they serve for many, many years, and most of them that we know, they're faithful, and I feel so proud, so honored to see the caliber of ladies who have served this community for many, many years. Just thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Mayo?
I'm going to see a his thunder because I feel honored, because they are sisters to me, and a brother in the fraternity, and the divine nine, but congratulations, ladies. Keep up the good work.
Again, thank you all so much. And with Dr. Miller?
Yeah, if you go back a couple of years, you know, when the plague started, we couldn't find masks and protection for fire departments, police officers, the rescue squad, all these people, there were just no masks available, no, no protection at all. So I think it really speaks volumes of what you ladies have done to, because these are occupations that are at the front line and get exposed every day. So we thank you for all that.
Thank you so much. Again, thank you all so much for everything that you all do. Let's give him another big hand, and thank you so much. As you all know, city council and city staff, Danville Public Schools was able to bring back the holiday shootout, and we named the holiday shootout, the Harry Johnson Holiday Shootout. This past year, when we were at the shootout, there was a grandmother and a mother that came to us with some great news, and I yield to Councilman Vogler, you're going to hear this wonderful news and meet this awesome young lady, Councilman Vogler.
So the mayor suggested I come back here, and y'all understand why in a second, and it's been a little while since I've been on this side of the podium. At this time, I'd like to ask Amara Harrell if, if she can come up, and I know she's got some friends and family with her here tonight, if they want to join her up here at the podium as well. Any that would like to come with her, feel free, but if we could get them...
Her coach is here too, Lee, her coach is here.
Yes, anyone that is here affiliated, please, please come on up, but if we could get her up here to the, up here to the front, and actually, I'm going to ask you to stand here so I can not mess up on my notes. So, Amara is...
As far as our superintendents of Danville Public Schools, Dr. Harrison is here. Let's welcome her, council.
Mayor, I'm a lot more nervous doing this with a whole crowd around me now, but here we go. Amara is a senior at George Washington High School who excels not only on the basketball court, where she had a record-setting 1,415 career points.
How many points? How many points?
1,415.
Wow.
Including 536 this year. If I got this wrong, please correct me later, but this, but she also excels in the classroom as well, where she has a 3.78 GPA. Now, the last time I got my notes, I don't think you had decided on which college you were going to go to yet, so if you have or you haven't, but we're going, I was told that you don't like to do a lot of public speaking, but we're going to get you to do that in a second, just to, but you can maybe give us an update. But as the mayor and council and we all know, we have so many great young people in our city, and Amara is certainly one of them, and we want to celebrate our young people here in Danville, and so we wanted to do that here tonight. You know, I have a young daughter, she just turned four yesterday, actually, and so I always think about what type of person and what type of young lady I'd like my daughter to grow up to be, and, and Amara, I hope she, she grows up to be like you, because you are a wonderful example of what a young person can be and should be, and, and I'm excited to see where you go next. So we wanted to present you, we've got the, the old seal, we've got the new logo, and we wanted to give these to you and congratulate you here tonight, and then also, we want you to come up, you and anyone who wants to join you, we're going to have a picture up here in a moment, and then we'll let you say whatever you'd like to say here at the podium.
Council, come on, join us for a picture.
And real quick, too, if anyone wants to read more about her story, it's in this month Showcase Magazine, Devon did a great job on it, and you can read all about her, but she is a fantastic young lady.
Am I ready? Looking this way? One, two, three.
I know your grandmother going to say something, because she came to me at the game, so I'm looking forward to hearing grandma. And Dr. Harrison, you can give comments as well, please, so please feel free to give comments. Coach is coaching her right now.
Well, first I want to say thank you, everybody. I wasn't, I don't know, I'm nervous, so.
She's not used to public speaking and all of the attention that she is getting, but she is very grateful, very humbled. She didn't think that she deserved all of this, but I told her she really did.
We just want to thank you all as a family, thank the city of Danville. We look forward to moving forward and making the city proud.
Thank you all so much. Let's give her another big hand. Coach, introduce yourself, some tell them, because a lot of people haven't met the new coach.
All right, I'm Coach Mancino Craighead, I'm the new Lady Eagles basketball coach, and you know, I've coached Amara for four years. You know, she's, she's followed me, and I followed her, and she's like a daughter to me. And you know, she, like her mother said, she is one of the most humble young ladies that I've ever met. You know, you would never know that she scored 1,400 points in her high school career, because she never talks about it. You know, even when she's upset with a teammate, you'll never hear her say that, and that's one thing that I love about her, and I'm hoping that she'll continue that when she goes off to college. We will be making her a college choice next week sometime, I'll be letting people know about that. We kind of talked about it this morning, it's official, but we won't, we won't, we won't announce it tonight, so.
But we love breaking news.
But you know, like I said, I appreciate all of you, thank you for this acknowledgement, and you know, just know that I'm here to stay.
Coach, let us thank you, because, Coach, Councilman Mayo, Councilman Vogler, and I worked with you during the tournament, you've done a superb job.
Yeah.
Great turnaround.
Good talk.
Oh, here we go.
Here we go. I am, and those of you that know me, you won't get this, all, almost speechless. I am so grateful to the council, to our superintendent, to my other son, Coach Mancino, to the principal of George Washington High School. If you don't know and didn't know, we got the best high school around.
Dr. Harrison did not pay you to say that, did she?
Oh, no, she did.
Yes, she did.
We have the most outstanding student athletes in the city. I say in the country. We're the best. Thank you all so much. This is my only granddaughter, right here, and I'm... This is my only granddaughter, right here, and I'm telling you right now, thank you.
Well, let me tell you what your grandmother did to me. Your grandmother, during the holiday shootout, she, you were playing basketball, and she ran and tackled me, and told me that we need to do something, to me and Councilman Vogler, to recognize you, and so we've been recognizing you, and we're excited to do it, so we're very proud of you, I know you're probably not used to this, but you better get used to it, because you're going many, many places, and gonna be recognized, so let's give her another big hand, and thank you so much.
This is the beginning of recognizing GW High School, young men and young women across the board, thank you.
You forgot to tell them, you, you forgot to tell them, you're a preacher too.
Yeah, I am.
Amen, amen.
And I'm cooked.
Communication from visitors, any citizen desire to speak on any item that's not on the agenda, you may come forward at this time, please state your name and your address for the record. Any citizen who desires to speak on any item that's not on the agenda may come forward at this time, good evening to you, sir, please state your name and your address for the record.
Good evening, my name is Nicholas Picola, my address is 164 Confederate Avenue, Danville, Virginia, 24541. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening, I'm coming to you guys today to talk about what I believe is a very important traffic issue that's been long overdue. If you haven't already seen it on the news, there's a young man that was hit on a motorcycle a few days ago, within the city limits, that young man is now on life support, and they are getting ready to donate his organs. The person that hit him drove away and has not been found. If you remember, a couple of months ago, in November, the same thing happened, right on West Main, a 74-year-old man was out at 9:30 at night, on Saturday night, walking down the street, right in front of the intersection of Lady Astor and West Main. He was hit, the person drove off, and I think they were able to find that person eventually. July 22nd of 2020, I was on a small motorcycle on South Main, I was also hit by a car, that car then drove off, leaving me in the road with a broken leg, and basically, where I was hit was in front of DCC. I was laying there, the motorcycle had landed on top of me, broken my leg, several people got out of their cars, they came over to me and, you know, tried to see if I was alright, waiting on the ambulance to come, and one person said to me, "Don't worry, they'll catch them on the traffic cameras." So that was one of my only consols, as I was getting, taken to the ambulance almost two years ago, as I was getting taken in the ambulance almost two years ago, that the person that drove away after hitting me, they would possibly get caught because of the traffic cameras. I found out after leaving the hospital, from several sources, that we don't have any traffic cameras at intersections here in the town. Out of the three guys that I just told you guys, or told you about, I'm the only one that's still alive. So my question to you guys today is, and you may not be the ones that answer it, but any clarification is, you know, super helpful, my question for you is, why don't we have traffic cameras at the intersections, and what do we have to do to get them?
Nicholas, to your left is our city manager, our deputy city manager, if you look on that podium, his cards is up there, take one of his cards, and reach out to him, and he'll be more, both of them would be more than happy to sit down with you and answer all your questions.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much for being here, thank you. Still in the communications, anyone else who desires to speak on any item that's not on the agenda, please come forward at this time, and give your name and your address for the record. Good evening to you, sir. Good evening.
My name is Gerald Keller Jr., my address is 1172 Kent Street, Danville, Virginia, 24540.
Welcome.
I'm coming before you guys to get help. I have been trying to get Xfinity Internet for over a year, before that, my parents for over 10 years, and before that, my grandparents. They ran the line halfway down the road and quit before my house, and my niece and nephew come up there to do homework on the Internet, and my DSL does not support it, because it's only a 3 meg DSL. They want me to pay $10,370 for them to extend the line on the poles, and I need some type of help, because the contract says between Comcast and City of Danville, that I live within 25 people within one mile, and I'm not getting any help.
Well, let me first of all, thank you for being here tonight, I'll share with you what I shared with the previous young man, look on that podium, there's a card, to your left is the city manager Ken Larkin, and the deputy city manager Earl Reynolds, grab one of their cards, reach out to them, reason that we asked for your name and your address for the record, because we'll be reaching out to you as well, so they will be reaching out to you, and get one of those cards, and again, thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're still in communications, anyone desire to speak on any item that's not on the agenda, you may come forward at this time, anyone else who would like to speak on any item that's not on the agenda, may come forward at this time, please state your name and your address for the record, and good evening to you.
Good evening.
Good evening to you both.
I am Katrina Carter, Mowbray Arch, Danville, Virginia.
Shakori Conley, Danville, Virginia.
And I stand before you on behalf of Black Brand, the Black Chamber of Commerce here in the city of Danville, to share with you an event that will be happening on April 26th, and Shakori has some flyers, and she's going to give those to you, but I want to tell you about this event, because this is awesome. In the fall, Black Brand had a SWAM certification six-week course, where we had businesses, small businesses, to attend, so they could learn how to become SWAM certified. As a part of that cohort, what we also promised was that we would have procurement officers from across the state to come here to Danville, Virginia, to be able to meet with small business owners, because one of the things that we know about the inequity in business is that because you lack relationship, therefore, you're not at the top of the list when businesses go to buy products. And so we're giving businesses, small women and minority businesses, an opportunity to come before procurement officers and build relationship. And so here at the institute, on April 26th, we will have our spring procurement fair for minority and women-owned businesses, it is on April 26th, from 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Lunch will be served, all we ask is that you register in advance, and so if you are a business and you purchase from other businesses, we invite you to reach out to us so that you can be a procurement officer, so your procurement officer can be there. Whether you're a small nonprofit like myself, we will be there, because guess what, we spend over a million dollars a year in products, and so therefore, we will be there to look at small businesses that we can possibly build relationship with. We're going to have Hitachi's going to be there, DCC will be there, we have a list of Caesars will be there, we have lots of different businesses that will be there to build these relationships, and so if you're a small business owner, you wanna be there. And again, it's April 26th, it will be at the institute from 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., we will serve you lunch, you also will have an opportunity during lunch to learn from the Tyson's individuals who are building the Tyson's plant, they're gonna give you some pointers as well. There is a lot packed into this day, if you're a small business owner, you do not wanna miss it. And so this is brought to you by Black Brand and by our supporters, our partners, DCC, SBSD, Rise Collaborative out of Halifax, they are partner with us, the entrepreneur ecosystem, so we are excited about this, and I hope that you all are excited as well, and that you will spread the word, whether you're a buyer or you're a small business, we wanna see you there.
Well, I purchased, got my tickets on Monday, and it was a very easy process, maybe you can tell them, because those who are viewing, how to get their tickets, because it's, when I registered to get my tickets, it's really simple, and it's really easy, and it came straight back, tell them how to get their tickets.
Okay, so there, we can give you a couple of easy ways, one, you can call 421-5040, you can also contact Crystal Cobbs at crystal.cobbs.
Spell it, spell it, spell it, because some people spell it K-Y-A-R.
Yes, yes, let me spell, crystal, C-R-Y-S-T-A-L dot Cobbs, C-O-B-B-S, at Black Brand Biz, B-I-Z. You can reach out to her there, and there is a URL, but it gets kinda confusing, so call or email Crystal, and she will send you the link, and we will definitely, we definitely like to see you there, if you look on Facebook, on our Facebook page, you can also find the information there, but whatever, please, make sure, especially if you're a small business, you want to be here, because it is through relationship building that you become top of mind for businesses when they go to make purchases.
Well, thank you so much, it's real exciting, again, that number is 434-421-5040, at the institute on April 26th, from 11:00 to 3:00, and lunches be provided, thank you all so much for all you do.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, and thank you all for being here as well. We're still in communication, anyone else desire to speak on any item that's not on the agenda, may come forward at this time, anyone else who desires to speak on any item that's not on the agenda, may come forward at this time. Under the consent agenda, I open the public hearing, anyone desires to speak on any item that's on the consent agenda, you may come forward at this time, anyone who desires to speak on any item on the consent agenda, may come forward at this time. I close the public hearing, Councilman Campbell?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I make a motion for accepting, receiving the considered general B, C, and D.
Second by Councilman Mayo, discussion of the motion. Madam Cruck, if you would, call a roll, please.
Mr. Buckner?
Aye.
Reverend Campbell?
Aye.
Mr. Hood?
Aye.
Mayor Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Mayo?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Saunders?
Aye.
Mr. Vogler?
Aye.
Mr. Whittle?
Vice Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the Appointments Committee comprised of Councilman Mayo, Councilman Campbell, and myself, would like to make the following recommendations to the council. A resolution appointing Tommy Bennett to the Planning Commission, and a resolution appointing Edgar Love to the Employment Retirement System Board.
Is there a second? Second by Councilman Campbell, I see Tommy is, Mr., will you please stand, Edgar, are you here? Is Tommy standing? We thank you all for willingness to serve, discuss, thank you so much, discussion of the motion, Madam Cruck, if you would, call a roll, please.
Reverend Campbell?
Aye.
Mr. Hood?
Aye.
Mayor Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Mayo?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Saunders?
Aye.
Mr. Vogler?
Aye.
Mr. Whittle?
Aye.
Mr. Buckner?
Aye.
Under new business, consideration of amending the zoning code to define skilled games as defined by the Virginia Code, I open the public hearing, anyone who would desire to speak on this agenda item, may come forward at this time, anyone desire to speak on this agenda item, may come forward at this time. I close the public hearing, council, what's your pleasure? Vice Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to propose an ordinance amending and reordaining Chapter 41 entitled Zoning Ordinance of the Code of the City of Danville, Virginia, by amending Article 3Q, Section C, by changing Item 1 to establish skilled games as defined by the Virginia Code as adult-oriented uses, and amending Section 1 by deleting Item 10, and amending Article 2 by adding a new Section Z.
Second by Councilman Mayo, discussion of the motion, Madam Cruck, if you would, call a roll, please.
Mr. Hood?
Aye.
Mayor Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Mayo?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Saunders?
Aye.
Mr. Vogler?
Aye.
Mr. Whittle?
Aye.
Mr. Buckner?
Aye.
Reverend Campbell?
Aye.
Mr. Hood?
Aye.
Mayor Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Mayo?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Saunders?
Aye.
Mr. Vogler?
Aye.
Mr. Whittle?
Aye.
Mr. Buckner?
Aye.
Reverend Campbell?
Aye.
Mr. Whittle?
Aye. Consideration of approving a special use permit for a planned unit development on Stewart Street, I open the public hearing, anyone desire to speak on this agenda item, may come forward at this time, good evening to you, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, everyone, nice to be with you, I'm Stephen Gould with Sova Legal, and I'm just gonna pull up a quick PowerPoint here for you this evening.
I can't hear you real well, Stephen.
Thank you so much, ladies and gentlemen, I'm Stephen Gould with Sova Legal, I'm pleased to represent the Walden family who have submitted the application tonight for this planned unit development in conjunction with Empire Holdings LLC. We believe we've got an exciting picture to paint for you this evening, it's a picture of redevelopment, of revitalization, at a time when Danville has an urgent need for quality housing, and it's a project spearheaded by a local family that wants to be part of the, of the solution. Our community is poised for the kind of growth that we've not seen in generations, but that growth requires housing, and this was echoed last month by the city manager who remarked that housing is extremely important in economic development. Ask so many of our key employers, Avery at Sova, and the list goes on, and they will share with you how the lack of available housing options is already an impediment to their efforts to be competitive in today's market. The proposal before you this evening represents a key step toward removing that impediment before it gets in the way of the new opportunities that we all anticipate are just around the corner for Danville, and perhaps even more importantly, it shows that Danville welcomes quality growth and investment. Now, I don't want you to take my word for it when it comes to the need for housing in our city, the study commissioned by this council in 2014, eight years ago, before many of our current successes, glimpsed our future and reached the same conclusion, in particular, it highlighted the need for housing between the hospital and Avery. On the screen, you'll see two of the direct quotes that make the, this exact point, and it's worth noting, this is in an area that already features a mixture of different types of housing options, with numerous apartment buildings along West Main Street and side streets like West Moreland, Lady Astor, and others, that feature comparable density. Now, the project before you tonight is an important one, but not simply because it proposes creating 162 new units of market rate housing, it's because it also breathes new life into Stewart Street. Most of you are likely familiar with this portion of Stewart Street as it exists now, largely vacant and unimproved, and as a result, featuring city-posted signs that remind passersby not to dump on the land. You may also be familiar with the prior incarnation of Stewart Street, which had become a blighted area in the city that was known for all the wrong reasons. The Walden family has worked for years to remove this blight, so that the opportunity before you tonight can be considered and hopefully approved. Like many of you, I am a visual learner, and I want to show you the specific parcels that we're talking about in this application, you'll see them highlighted here in yellow. Only a few structures still remain in this corridor, and here is the site plan that the developer envisions, it's gonna be laid out in front of you. It's a true transformation that creates an attractive, well-built community that connects to West Main Street, you can see a side-by-side of the current parcels and the site plan here, to help provide some additional context, to allow you to visualize what the new reality for Stewart Street could be. And I will walk you through the plan in greater detail momentarily, but first, let me share a couple of numbers with you. As envisioned, this project represents an investment of $20 million and likely more on Stewart Street. This is on top of the funds that the Walden family has invested to date to acquire these parcels, and to clear the dilapidated structures that existed previously. The total footprint is more than six and a half acres, right in the heart of the city. This is exactly what we should be looking for as we think about infill development going forward, and the project, though, isn't designed to build on every inch of ground that's available, instead, you have more than one-third of this acreage set aside for open space. There will be 162 market rate units, all with high-end finishes, stainless steel appliances, granite countertops, and the like. Units will range from one to three bedrooms, with most being one to two bedrooms. City code requires one parking space per unit for residential dwellings, this proposal exceeds that number by 40%, and importantly, this proposal received the unanimous support of the Planning Commission one month ago. Now, let me show you the site plan in a little more detail. Entry to the community will be from West Main Street, units will be spread across six separate buildings that you can see here, the community will feature amenities like a pool and a clubhouse, which you'll see. Units will range from one to three bedrooms, with most being one to two bedrooms. City code requires one parking space per unit for residential dwellings. This proposal exceeds that number by 40%. And importantly, this proposal received the unanimous support of the Planning Commission one month ago. Now, let me show you the site plan in a little more detail. Entry to the community will be from West Main Street. Units will be spread across six separate buildings that you can see here. The community will feature amenities like a pool and a clubhouse, which you'll see at the top of the plan, that will make this a sought-after location, not just in Danville, but in our region. You'll notice the professional landscaping, the fencing surrounding the property, and the stormwater pond in the bottom right-hand corner, all of which are geared toward this development being a good neighbor. And to prevent through traffic, Stewart Street will be closed off behind the back building, creating a cul-de-sac of sorts. Now, design of these buildings is still in its early stages, but an emphasis will be placed on blending the design with the established historic look of the area around it. Here, you will see several options, including one at the top left that features the port cochere for the back building. The developer is eager to continue receiving feedback going forward on how the buildings can best blend with the surrounding area. Now, when I mentioned numbers a minute ago, there was one set of figures that I did not touch on, and I believe that they will make a little more sense now that you've seen the visuals. If approved, this project will have a significant impact on property tax revenue generated from these parcels. At present, they have an assessed value of under $60,000, yielding less than $500 annually in property taxes. With a projected value of at least $20 million, that tax revenue jumps to $168,000 a year. I mentioned earlier that the site plan reflects the developer's desire to be a good neighbor. That commitment was on display even before this application was filed with the city's planning department. Postcards were mailed to everyone slated to receive notice of the rezoning request, inviting them to Kremen Vine to meet the developer and learn more about the project. Neighbors had the opportunity to see a site plan and the potential building design and to engage with the entire project team on technical issues. It was a well-attended event with some great discussion, and it helped to confirm, even before the application was filed, that the proposal was on point. Before the Planning Commission met, we learned that a number of neighbors indicated they had not received the postcard inviting them to the original event. The Waldens decided to host a second community meeting and had invitations hand-delivered to those that we understood had not received notice of the prior meeting. The outreach efforts by the Waldens were not limited to holding these events. Here, you'll see a website, StewartStreet24541.com, that allowed interested parties to submit feedback via a web form. Now, we also recognize that a project of this size, which is changing the status quo, is never going to be without criticism. But we've been pleased by how much excitement this project has generated. If you had the opportunity to listen to the discussion before the Planning Commission, you heard a diverse array of comments in support of the proposal. You'll see a few of them on this slide, and you'll hear more during the public hearing, I believe, particularly from employers who are in dire need of quality housing for their team members. The developer has also worked to recognize and address a number of concerns that have been raised. You'll see several of those referenced here. Again, as I mentioned, with the design, we welcome input going forward. Longstanding concerns about drainage between Montague and Stewart Streets should be helped significantly by this project with the landscaping, the stormwater pond, et cetera. Site is also being designed to ensure that first responders have the access and maneuverability that they need. And the developer is fully committed to performing and funding a traffic study to determine what, if any, improvements need to be made at the intersection of Stewart and West Main, where the existing entry point is located. We will engage an engineering firm that has a track record of working with the city to perform analysis like this, to ensure that it's handled in an independent and professional manner, and that improvements can occur in conjunction with building the community. I can tell you that no one wants to create traffic or safety issues. And to that end, if the study indicates that an additional access point, in addition to the existing access from West Main, is needed, we will review the options available to determine what makes the most sense for the project. I do want to note that the desire of some to route most or all of the traffic from Central Boulevard would be particularly costly, requiring the development of new infrastructure and most likely reducing the number of units and consequently the tax revenue to the city. The same would be the case with any effort to require the inclusion of even more parking spaces than have been proposed. Now, before I close, I want to highlight the support of two neighbors who recognize the thoughtfulness of this project. Here, you will see statements of support from the two property owners who border the entrance to Stewart Street, Towns Funeral Home, and the West Side Duplex LLC. I believe that their support speaks volumes. Additionally, the developer has taken steps to respect the privacy of other neighbors along West Main. Here, you will see in green a buffer being left between the project and the backyards of several houses. There's no desire to bump up against those existing houses, I can tell you that. And last, but not least, I want to reiterate the developer's commitment to seeing through the 10 conditions that were recommended by city staff and by the Planning Commission. Let me just close by saying that this is a project by a Danville family for a community that they love and want to see grow, and it has considerable support. I would ask those here in support of the project to stand at this time, if they would. Thank you all. Mr. Mayor, Counsel, we can't add new land to the city, but we can be creative about developing pockets like Stewart Street that have tremendous potential. The benefits for the city are immense, and we ask for your support this evening and are happy to answer any questions either now or after the public, members of the public have spoken.
Thank you so much. We're still in public hearing. Anyone else desire to speak on this agenda item may come forward this time. Please state your name and your address for the record, please. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Angie Schof. I reside at 276 Hawthorne Drive. Good evening, City of Danville's mayor, city council members and staff. As a Danville native, I am here to voice my support to approve the special use permit request to provide a creative reuse of the parcels envisioned on the Stewart Street Planned Unit Development proposed site. I grew up in this town and was the daughter of a local veterinarian. I've chosen to begin returning to Danville with my husband because the evolving lifestyle in Danville has so much to offer. We could have settled anywhere, and we choose to live here. Danville does really well to attract new industries and companies and is seeing success in monetizing our River District. Many improvements are occurring at the airport. We will soon begin to see improvements in our school field area as a result of many years of planning and campaigning. Danville has placed several sizable bets that this journey will continue, and there is more to do with the city. We want to be a destination where people want to visit and live, but we need to address housing options. I have lived and worked in Charlotte, North Carolina for over 33 years. I have firsthand experience living in an environment with combinations of luxury apartments, million-dollar historic homes, and affordable housing. It works. The traffic, noise, privacy concerns never evolved. We did not see increased problems with crime. In fact, we saw sidewalk accessibility improvements. We saw increased green space and more privacy created by landscapes like the proposed Stewart Street apartment development. We need this project in Danville. The housing industry continues to evolve. In fact, it shows more people do not desire home ownership, regardless of income. They want lifestyle flexibility. Our city needs to meet this new demand. Please vote to approve this council action that helps keep the city that has always been my home beautiful. Thank you.
Thank you for being here. We're still in public hearing. Anyone else desire to speak may come forward this time. Please state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Bob Geronic. My wife and I live on Hawthorne Drive in Forest Hills. I'm 92 years old, retired, but I'm very proud to be serving on the Regional Airport Commission. I am in awe of the things that are happening in Danville as I speak. Our area is growing, and it's doing a great job in growing. And it's providing jobs and opportunities for a lot of people that didn't have these opportunities offered to them before. I'm pleased, very pleased, to speak about the community need for non-subsidized multifamily housing on Stewart Street in this case, which is why, why I'm here. We already have this kind of housing in a very limited quantity on West Moreland Court. Our former mayor, Mayor Hamlin, who had a very nice house in Forest Hills, recently moved into the multifamily housing at La George in West Moreland Court. Traffic is not a problem on West Moreland Court, and the access to the area from West Moreland Court, which is just across the street virtually from Stewart Street, is good, whether you're going to the museum or if any of you have been out recently to see what Caesars is doing on the site where Dan River Mills was, it's going to fill you with pride to see the way our, our area is going forward. Because our area is growing, we need some multifamily housing for retiring people, but also for middle-management people that are coming into this area. And so, it's my pleasure to really support this project, and I hope you all take a critical evaluation look at the need. Thank you very much.
And thank you for your, thank you for your service on the Airport Commission. Thank you so much. We're still in public hearing. Anyone else desire to speak on this agenda item may come forward. Please state your name, your address for the record, please.
Good evening. My name is George Willoughby. I live on Hawthorne Drive in Danville. I'm a fairly new resident. My wife and I relocated here approximately two years ago. My wife was recruited to come and work with a startup company, Cirque. She's unable to be here tonight. She's out of town on business. I believe she spoke at your last meeting, and she asked me to come and say a few words. I appreciate the opportunity to come and speak to you. I'm a little bit like the young high school basketball star. I'm a little nervous. I feel like I'm addressing James Bonecrusher Smith up here, Mayor. You look, you look just like Bonecrusher. I give you that.
Wait, now, tell us where you, stop this clock for a second. Tell us where you and your family moved from.
Well, we're, we're from North Carolina, but we came from Oregon. We spent a little time on the West Coast, and it was time to come home.
We haven't had a chance to say, "Welcome home." Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. First, I just want to say, we fully support this project, not just myself, but the business itself. We feel it would be a real boon to the, the company in trying to recruit people to come. We would like to see this be an anchor hub. It will always be a home to the company. We may not do all our manufacturing here, depending on how many people we can bring in. That's not my decision to make. But just to give you a, a couple of examples, we, we just brought up a couple of people that have been working remotely from Florida, and they were unable to find what they considered adequate housing and eventually ended up in Greensboro and commute daily. We just had a couple of fellows that run some equipment for us. Young boys had been living at home, were going to get their first apartment, finally making some good money, ended up getting apartments in Martinsville because they couldn't find what they were looking for here. As far as a need, my middle son recently gave up a rental place here to go work for a company that is partnered with us in Ohio. Within 48 hours, there was like 40 people had applications in to rent the house that he was in before he ever had his stuff out of there. So, I think, I'm sure you all are aware more than I am of the, the need for more housing in the area, and it's only going to grow, obviously, with Casino, Kroger, you know, go on and on, the companies that are coming. Since we've come, been here, I've been told that this is the comeback city, and I, I'm all for that. I think that would be awesome. For the city to come back, in my opinion, it's going to need two things for sure. It's going to need money, and it's going to need people. This project, should it be approved, would bring both. It's going to bring the people, the people are going to bring the money, it's going to revitalize that whole area up and down Main Street. Stores like Midtown, Crema, all the stores, Rippeys up and down the street are going to be the, the true benefactors. It's not going to people, be the people building the project. It's going to take them years or decades to recoup any money. They're putting their line out, they're putting out on the line. But the stores and the people, restaurants, are going to see the immediate effect of having this amount of people living in town. I guess that's pretty much all I have to say for you. I do appreciate you letting me speak for you tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you. We're still in public hearing. Anyone desire to speak on this agenda item may come forward this not time. State your name and address for the record, please. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. I'm Don Anst. I'm the Averyd University's Chief Financial and Operating Officer, and I'm pleased to be here to speak in favor of this project. I reviewed the plans and the desired outcomes associated with this project, and I'd like to make a few very brief comments in regard to the project. One is the hiring managers up on campus, and those of us that try to recruit and retain staff up on campus know that affordable, quality, convenient housing is essential for the university. So, that's point number one. Point number two, economic development. I'm the chief financial officer. I'm all in favor of economic development. As we, this university grow, and we, the city grow, we grow together in partnership. So, for economic development, we also need new housing to assist and retain businesses in town. And again, quality, convenient, affordable housing is key to that. The last point I want to make is Dr. Franks gives her regrets that she wasn't able to be here tonight, but she lends her support to this project as well.
Thank you so much. We're still in public hearing. Anyone else desire to speak on this agenda item may come forward. Please state your name, your address for the record. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Mr. Larkin, Mr. Reynolds, and other staff members. Thanks for allowing this opportunity to speak today. I'm here today representing the Institute for Advanced Learning and Research. At the risk of being redundant to some of the things that were already said, but I felt I did need to get up and speak. Of course, the institute is in the business of economic transformation, economic development. That's what we do, and of course, we're a key partner with the city and county in these, in these efforts. And there are a number of issues. First of all, I am here to support this development, but I also want to really speak to the, the larger housing issue that exists. As many of you know, because of the work that's going on behind the scenes that we can't always share with the public until it's announced, housing has become a tremendous obstacle for our, our community. We have to get ahead of this issue if we're going to have success in the economic development world. Two specific projects that I'll touch on, that I also touched on when I came here to speak for the Planning Commission. Some of you may have seen some of the work we're doing with training in the Department of Defense Arena. We just graduated our second cohort. Third cohort starts in April. Right now, we're small numbers. We're looking to grow that program to graduate about 1,000 folks per year. This, this is a four-month training. The institute will require about 350 apartments to be able to house these people coming into our community. We presently have about 48 units in the River District that we have, and this is one of the big issues is as we are being called to ramp up, and a lot of that is on very short notice, it's, it's just difficult. It's an obstacle. And so, that's a specific project that we have a vested interest in, but obviously, it's going to support the community. The other thing is, you know, our, the, the Mega Park at Berry Hill. You know, if you're not familiar, the Mega Park is the largest industrial site on the entire East Coast, from Florida to Maine, I guess. And of course, in that park, we are not looking for companies that employ hundreds of people. We are looking for companies that employ thousands of people. And of course, one of the concerns that these companies have is the housing issue. And so, this is a big issue for our community. I think what is being proposed with this project and the Walden family is a start to that. The reality is, we need much more of these projects if we're going to be a viable community to attract the industry. And I think, you know, I think, I have not from here, I've been here my whole adult life. What's going on today is incredible. When I was sitting up there like you folks, I never dreamed that we would be facing some of these issues we're facing today. So, we're at a really unique moment in time. Appreciate the work that many people, yourselves and many of the group, people that serve on commissions and, and groups. We're, we're at a really unique time in our history, but if we don't address this housing issue, it's going to, it's going to definitely be a stumbling block. So, so again, I appreciate the opportunity. I'm sorry to be repetitive, but I felt like I had to speak on behalf of the fine institution that I represent.
Thank you so much. Thank you. We're sitting in public hearing. Please state your name and your address for the record, please. Good evening, sir.
Mayor, City Council. My name is John Kent. I'm the Chief Operating Officer at Sovi Health Danville, and I also live here in Danville on 842 Main Street. I'm here to speak in favor of this development opportunity. From the hospital perspective, one of the things that the hospital brings for the community is good jobs, and folks who are, have an opportunity to raise themselves up and live at a little bit higher standard perhaps than they did as students. And oftentimes, these folks, when they come to work in our community, especially if they're coming from outside the community, or if they're just establishing themselves professionally, they struggle to find temporary housing, leased housing. And so, we definitely see this as a great opportunity. Second up on that is the fact that it is, of course, walking distance. One of the things that attracted my wife and I to this community is the ability to live in town and to be able to walk, and walk two things. Walk to new restaurants, walk to stores like Midtown, but the ability to have a pedestrian area, and this just will accentuate that greatly. So, we find that to be significantly helpful for us. The last thing, and I'd ask my colleague Leslie Sturven to come forward and talk to you. Leslie is the designated institutional officer, which means she's in charge of our medical training programs for physicians, and I'm going to ask her just to speak for a moment about some of the struggles that our new resident physicians have, and why it's so important to us to find good housing for these individuals, and what it's meant to our community. So, Leslie, I'll give you the balance of my time.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mayor Jones, all members of City Council. So, here at Sovi Health Danville, we are very fortunate to have medical students and physician residents who train in our community. On an annual basis, we have 80 medical students. We're a core site for VCOM, which is associated with Virginia Tech, and LUCOM, which is the medical school that's associated with Liberty University College of Osteopathic Medicine. So, that's 80 medical students that are here the majority of the year. And then, we have soon-to-be 44 physician residents that do three years of training in internal medicine and family medicine. Many come single, but many come with families. And the challenge that they face is finding affordable, safe housing. Most prefer housing that's near the hospital. And one of the things that many of you can confirm is that our physician residents started the trend for living in the lofts that were built in the River District. Many of them live there now. So, the thought that we could have this project and continue to have affordable, safe housing, again, close to the hospital, is very important for us, because when we are recruiting our medical students and those physician residents into our community, we're not just recruiting to Sovi Health. The community is a very important part of that. So, we are very proud to support this project and very respectfully ask that council consider approving as well.
Thank you. Thank you so much. We're still in public hearing. Anyone else has desire to speak on this agenda item may come forward at this time. Please state your name and your address for the record. Good evening.
I'm Kevin Brown, and I live at 243 West Main Street. I'm one of the properties that would back up directly to where this proposed development would be. My primary concern is that I moved here 10 years ago. I believe I sent a message to each of you through your website about my concerns. I'm not opposed to Stewart Street being developed. I think it does need development. I'm just opposed to the size of the proposed development. I think that the population density on a street that's only three-tenths of a mile long, especially with only one outlet coming out on West Main Street, that's just too many people and too small of an area. And it's very reminiscent of the areas that I came from in Northern Virginia, where it was extremely crowded. I definitely relate to the person who spoke from Charlotte. I definitely understand what it's like to live in an area like that, and I would hope that the consideration, when it comes to whether or not this project is approved at its given size, isn't strictly based on tax revenue and the actual impact to the community as well.
Thank you for being here. Thank you so much. We're still in public hearing. Good evening, sir.
Council, thanks for letting us all speak here tonight. My name is Andrew Hessler. I live at 255 Howland Circle, and I'm a dentist that part-owner with Danville Dental Associates. And I'd like to kind of echo some of the things that were said before me, about as far as access to care, access to quality, and specialist care, speaking from both experience and some observational things. Number one, Dr. Hartline and myself, we moved here in 2018 from Ohio. I do want to say it was a difficult move, not because of a lack of wanting to be here or really excitement for being here still today, but finding adequate housing with a system that's not very streamlined. If it weren't for the fact that we bumped into literally one of the major developers of downtown, and he was able to show us that one of the next projects would be open in the coming months, he actually was able to put us into a temporary unit for about six months before he was finished with the next complex. And so, it was definitely an interesting way to come to town, and I can see where someone would struggle then, and also even now, more so than ever. Also, speaking as far as observationally, the practice, we've been trying to recruit specialist surgeons to the group, one of which we did manage to recruit on a part-time basis. However, despite all of my efforts to find adequate housing that they would like to stay here in town, they've actually chosen to be in Greensboro and commute every day to be with us here. And I can't say on their behalf whether that will change their long-term outlook on whether they choose to call Danville home, but I really hope that we can find them something here soon, because I would believe they would be very interested in a project much like this. So, I thank you for all letting us speak tonight, and I hope that you'll consider that, you know, if this were to be approved, as in speaking and approval for it. If it's not here, then where? And if it's not now, then when? Because it would have been even helpful then. So, thanks for letting me talk tonight, and I hope you approve. Thank you again.
We're still in public hearing. Anyone else has desire to speak on this agenda item may come forward at this time. While he's coming forward, let me once again thank all of you all for being here tonight. Thank you all so much. Good evening, sir.
Well, thank you, sir. My name is Mark Howard. I live at 233 West Main Street. I am also one of the folks that's impacted by this development. First, I want to share with everybody that has talked about housing and the challenges we have, absolutely right. Couldn't agree with you more. I think where I stand isn't about whether or not housing is needed, or even if this development is needed, because I believe wholeheartedly it is. However, my concern has to do with the infrastructure. It has to do with some of the things that Mr. Gold talked about during his presentation. My concern is, what are we doing at that intersection at West Main and Stewart? And that is a thoroughfare for our EMS personnel and our first responders. We talked about doing a cul-de-sac at the other end. Why aren't we looking at it over at the end where the funeral home is, where my house is? He talked about having a buffer between where my house is and where the project is. Why don't they just reverse it? Because then, that we can ensure that our EMS personnel and any other emergency vehicles can get in and out of that area quickly. We talked and heard this earlier this afternoon about pedestrians being killed, you know, on Main Street a few months ago. We have concerns with the traffic. The second issue that I have has more to do with the parking. A lot of the folks that live on West Main Street use that off-street parking. With 162 apartments that are one, two, and three bedrooms, although they may be exceeding what is required by code, I truly don't believe that there's enough parking for that size of a program or established housing complex. So, I think that, you know, you're looking at even having two parking spots for each one of those apartments. Although, Danville is a wonderful place to live, and I just moved to Danville about a year and three months ago from Philadelphia. Absolutely love Danville. My concern is that, do we have the infrastructure to support it the way it has been described tonight? Do we have the infrastructure to ensure that our emergency vehicles can get to the hospital to other parts of the city through that artery? And do we have the parking that's going to be essential? Also lived in Philadelphia and Northern Virginia as well, and we need to make sure that we are positioning ourselves that we have smart growth, we have smart infrastructure to support this growth. I'm also the CEO of the Hughes Center. I couldn't agree with you guys more. I also have all those same struggles with recruiting and hiring and retaining good people, and housing is an issue. I'm just asking for us to consider alternatives. I know that the Planning Commission asked for some sort of traffic study. I don't know if that was done, but I think we need to consider those options as well. Thank you for your time.
Counsel, I don't know if you're, I'm sure you're listening very carefully, but I, the number of persons who've spoken tonight talked about they've been in Danville one or two years. Danville is absolutely the comeback city. We're still in public hearing. Those of you, anyone else would like to speak on this agenda item may come forward at this time.
My name is Yuliyan Bobe. I live at 247 West Main Street. Also, I want to say that I came to Danville maybe seven years ago. I used to live in Tokyo, and I was seated with 30 million people. Before that, I used to live in Osaka, 20 million people. And then, I moved to Connecticut, more people. Finally, I found happiness here in Danville.
Welcome home.
Also, my company hires over 25 people, and I believe some people that moved here from North Carolina moved here because they work for my company. I can say that none of the person working for the company had any problem finding a place to live. Also, some of the arguments that were brought tonight, I think, were exaggerated. I just wanted to put it in perspective for you. I'm not against the development. I think the population density that is going to be on that little street is too high. If this gentleman wants to build 10, 20 apartments, that's fine, but 162 apartments, put it in perspective. If you assume that you put two people in one apartment, you have 300 people. So, I made some calculations. If you pull that rendering again, Mr. Walden owns about six acres on that street. So, if you take 300 people and translate it as six acres, you are going to have a population density to that of LA. All right? So, I'm okay with housing, but I think the density is just too much. And I think the fact that that rendering shows that it's a cul-de-sac, I think will call for future problems. Also, this project is $20 million. This is great for Danville, but we are at the risk of alienating neighbors that have more than $20 million invested on West Main Street. Also, the last point I want to make, this project, the way it is positioned, wants to take advantage of the West Main prestige, right? But is not subject to historic society. So, for example, if I want to change the color of my house or anything on West Main, I have to go to historic society and make an application, and I've done that. I'm happy to do it. All my neighbors are happy to do it. However, this project, they, if they want to paint the, you know, the building pink, they can do it. So, I'm just asking you to table this application and consider it a little bit more, because the density to me is just too much. Thank you.
Again, thank you so much for being here. Anyone else would like to speak on this agenda item?
Yes, I would. I'd say that the Walden family was trying to take advantage of the West Main Street area. That prompted me to rise. I apologize. My name is Rose Marie Lynn. I live at 134 Clarendon Circle. I have lived in Danville, Virginia since I was seven years old. I came here with Goodyear Tire and Rubber Company, back when the middle class actually existed. I am very proud to say that I know the Walden family and that what they are doing in the West Main Street area is not taking advantage. It is revitalizing the area. Have you been to Floral Avenue lately? Thank you. I need not say anymore. What they're going to do is improve the West End. Improvements.
Ma'am, if you'd just talk to us.
I am so sorry, but that galled me so bad when he said they were going to take advantage.
Maybe, maybe, pardon me. Let me try to help.
Thank you.
Let me just try to help. What has happened thus far is everyone basically, and the gentleman before you stated that he's not against the project.
Yes, nor am I. And I'm in support of it. And I'm in support of it. I own property of 327 Virginia Avenue. I wouldn't dream of living there now. It's a despicable area. That whole Lower Watson, Avondale, you know it. We all know it. We need Stewart Street. We need all of those areas revamped with people that are willing to sink $20 million into this economy. Having enough said, thank you for your time. I apologize.
Thank you for being here. Thank you so much. Anyone else? Give me help. Let me just say, let me just say this. Let me just say this to everyone, and I was going to wait to say this a few minutes ago. Council has received, I don't know how many messages in regards to this project, and we have weighed the options as well, but I think, from what I've read, the only concern thus far I've seen is in regards to traffic, and there is a traffic study. So, ma'am, please state your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, my name is Shelby Clark. I own the property of 227 Montague Street, and my property is right at the very end where this cul-de-sac is going to be in the back of the buildings. So, I get the, I guess that's the retainer pond in my backyard, literally in my backyard. I'd like to remind you, and some of you are new, this project was proposed to us in 2015, and you approved a smaller plan. It was nine patio homes, five duplexes, and two buildings, and you put a stipulation in that of no more than two buildings and 24 units. Nothing has changed of my fears and concerns of this project. This project, again, has returned to us even more dense, more projects, because we keep here a comeback city in the need for housing. That does not mean that we need that many people living in my backyard. I will get all the noise pollution, the litter, the light pollution, everything is going to come back there. And I'm not really sure how this works in acquiring the permission for the cul-de-sac, and then you get to sit a building right in the road, because I pay taxes on that road, and now he's acquired the street, and there's a building sitting in the street. So, I mean, do you buy that street? I mean, that's part of the project now, is him closing the cul-de-sac off and putting a building in the street. I would also like to quote Mr. Walden from a news article from his interview on January 17th, 2015. The reason we need the cul-de-sac is because we need to have the nice housing, and then you have got to stop before you get back to the blighted housing again. Again, calling the end of that blighted housing, and it's really not. These are people that have lived there for years. They're quiet. They take care of their property. They keep all of the weeds and stuff down, and that, to me, is not a necessity for a cul-de-sac. That does not mean that this property needs to come out on West Main Street because you don't want people to drive through blight. I mean, it needs to be reversed, I think, for EMS purposes. I would also probably be more apt, from the last plan of 2015, if these were condos. If these were properties that people were buying, there was an HOA in place, and that the property was more protected with the people that lived there, and they were purchased, and they were not transient people. These were people that are going to buy property and invest and stay in our towns and put our children in our schools. We need homes. We do not need transient areas. That's just my opinion. I have spoke this to several of you, and that's how I feel about that area being developed behind me. If it's going to be apartments, all I ask is that we take this huge dense down like we did before. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel, I'm about to close the public hearing. I would like for all of those who are for the project to stand once again, all who are for. Thank you so much. Thank you. You may have a seat. All who are not so much opposed to it, but what I heard someone mention table, would you stand those? Thank you all so much for being here as well. Thank you. Thank you so much. I close the public hearing. Counsel, let's get this on the floor, because I'm sure you've got discussions. Counsel, what's your pleasure? Councilman Vogler.
Yeah, Mayor, I move we adopt an ordinance granting special use permit application, PLSUP 2021-422 filed by Keith Walden on behalf of CWC Holdings LLC and Empire Rentals LLC, requesting a special use permit for a planned unit development in accordance with Article 17 of Chapter 41 entitled zoning ordinance of the Code of the City of Danville, including parcel ID numbers 20596, 20597, 25672, 22841, 24958, 25085, 25226, 22099, 25069, 25070, 25074, 2042... parcel ID numbers 20596, 20597, 25672, 22841, 24958, 25085, 25226, 22099, 25069, 25070, 25074, 20420, 20421, 20422, 25542, 25073, 23886, 23561, 23563, 22924, 24974, 21173, 20425, 24984, 25098, 22104, 22103, 22513, 24649, 24358, 21117, 24359, 25088, 20424, 25087, 20418, 25086, 25090, 25089. Please don't ask me to read that again.
Now, read it all over again. Second by Councilman Whittle, is that now discussion of the motion. Madam Clerk, I thought we was going to get away with this. Madam Clerk, call the robe. I mean, Councilman Buckner.
Yeah, everybody that's here tonight has very strong opinions, one way or the other. I think by far and large, even the folks that aren't exactly 100% in agreeance with this project, aren't really concerned about the project coming or not. I think, Mr. Walden, I think you'll know that we all are excited about your investment in our city. And we're excited about the fact that there's going to be new housing in an old area that's been run down for a very, very long time. And I personally thank you for what you've done to that street and what you're going to do there is very, very exciting. One thing I would like to see is, and I know it was talked about by the planning commission, is the traffic study. The traffic study, for me, is going to be the way I base my decision on this vote tonight. There is a, you know, lots of folks have been talking about different ways to enter and exit the property. I personally, as a real estate broker, I'm an agent, sell houses, I invest in properties, have several all over town, nothing to this magnitude. And again, I understand the investment that you're making, and it's huge. And again, thank you so much for that. But if you look on the map that Mr. Gould brought up earlier, there's a parcel, 25090 and 25086. It's in between what used to be 147 and 201 Stewart Street. That right-of-way piece of land, and some of you guys, I'm sorry, I'm not old enough to remember when there was actually a street that went through there, but it's before 86 was there, I believe. And that's still owned by the city, and that's a right-of-way and an entrance and an exit, I think, it's a match made in heaven. It would, I think, solve a lot of issues that you have with the neighborhood. I think there's a peaceful compromise here to be heard. And if the traffic study comes back and says that it needs to go somewhere, I would strongly recommend that we look at that. Again, that belongs to the city. I can't speak on behalf of the rest of council, or I can't speak on the rest of the city. But I, for one, would be very much in favor of giving that to the Walden family, or developing it and paving it and making it the entrance to the property. It then becomes its very own exclusive neighborhood, a very, very fine neighborhood, from what we've seen here tonight. I really actually look forward to the project. I look forward to seeing that street redeveloped. And if we can do it in a way that is mutually beneficial to everybody in the neighborhood, in the city, I think that's a, it's a win-win-win all the way around the, all the way around the room, in my opinion. That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Saunders.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. With regards to the project, very impressive to see people here tonight in support of it. And I think it was very, very impressive. I have several questions for the manager and/or his staff. Say a little bit about the traffic study. And this whole project is dependent upon that study. So what, what are the pros and cons? The study could say A, B, C, D. The study could say E, F, G, whatever. What in the study could change this project?
I'm going to ask our planning director, Doug Placzynski, to come up and help answer that question, if you would, please. Thank you.
Doug, good evening.
Good evening. Thank you. Let me give a little bit of a preface. Not only am I an accredited planner, my graduate education's in civil engineering and transportation systems. So your question is, what could the traffic study do? And essentially, what does it do? Traffic impact analysis will...
No, no. How will the traffic study impact this project, potentially?
Certainly. Well, what the traffic study is going to look at is the amount of trips that are generated by the potential demographics of the site. It'll break those out, and how many trips people, on average, use to walk, bike, drive, et cetera. Then it'll take a look at the entrances to the project, and it'll see how they're functioning without the project being built, and then how they'll function with the project being built. If the project's going to increase traffic to a point where there is a problem, and there's grades that are calculated out, it's an engineering study, it's not just opinion, then the engineers performing the study will be tasked to come back with recommended solutions. Could it meet a traffic signal warrant analysis? And should there be a traffic signal on West Main and Stewart? I don't know that answer. That could be a possibility. Could it say that you really need to have another full-time open entrance and exit, say off of Watson or off another adjacent right-of-way? Yes, it could. I don't know the answer to that yet, because we haven't analyzed it.
Let me ask you this, and I think this is a very impressive presentation tonight, very impressive. And we definitely want more growth in our city. But what could the traffic study come back with that could change a motion, change a vote if it both passes tonight? What could happen in this traffic study that could change the action of council? Should council support this project because the planning commission said it's dependent upon a traffic study?
Well, what the traffic study will do is it provide an analysis back. And given the amount of right-of-way that would have to be vacated or abandoned for the property to work, and that does take council action, there is another bite at the apple. So for this project to work, council will have to see the few, the way the rights-of-way and intersections into the project will change, because the city will at some point be asked to give up the street, where Stewart Street is now. So there will be an opportunity to explain the results of that traffic study, and why the roads are going to need to be configured the way they are, above and beyond the approval that the planning commission's recommended today.
Of course, you have a funeral home in the area, but more, not more, excuse me, I'm sorry. I apologize for that. Also, we have a hospital in the area. So my question to either you or Mr. Locken is, what potential impact would that have on traffic for people visiting, family members, emergency vehicles, et cetera? I know the hospital people are here tonight, they're supporting it, fine. I'm just saying, this traffic study, how could that potentially negatively impact what we're trying to do?
The traffic study could say that there will be a disruption to traffic flow based on the amount of vehicles entering and leaving, and provide recommendations to mitigate those negative impacts. So it will look at adjacent uses, even special uses, like funeral homes and hospitals that get really intense traffic at certain times of the week, and hospitals that have shift changes regularly. So there are ebbs and flows on traffic on West Main because of those uses.
Okay, please don't leave. So, Mr. Whitfield, either way, depending on the traffic study, council votes again on this project?
That's my understa, not on the project, but on the street conveyance, based on the cul-de-sac that's being proposed, and the fact that a building would be put in the middle of the street.
Okay, and I apologize for my candor, but say a little bit more about the, not the project, but I thought it is a project. I read it says that the planning commission approves it pending this study, okay? The traffic study. So I guess what I'm asking you is, either way, will council get to vote again on this, on this issue?
On the issue of whether or not to grant the abandonment of the streets, yes, but not necessarily on the special permit that you're talking about tonight. That's the way I understand it.
So are you saying that this could change from Stewart Street?
Pardon me?
Are you saying this could change from Stewart Street?
No. What I'm saying is, if you all approve this, and they then move forward with the project, they were going to have to come back and ask the council to abandon the streets, basically either sell or give them the streets. That would be a second bite at the apple, sort of, and a sort of a second nibble. And should you decide not to abandon the streets or allow the cul-de-sac, then that may change the project, but it wouldn't necessarily do away with the project.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I don't mean to take too much time, but in some ways, it's sounding like I am voting on an unknown. And that, that concerns me. I'm not, I think it's good that our city is growing. I love, love the comments, the medical, the people in Greensboro want to move here and find property, et cetera. But I'm just a little bit confused. I think the project is very impressive, and a great job done by Attorney Gold. It's just that one issue that has me a little bit disturbed, in the sense of what could happen with the traffic study that could change all of this? We're talking about Stewart Street, I understand that. But what are the other options if the traffic study does come back and say you can't use Stewart Street? So I just have some, some questions, Mr. Mayor.
Let me try. A few months back, Doug, there were some concerns in regards to 86 South Main in that area, and the area already existed, better shopping center. Recently, a stop sign has been, a light and walk, everything has been installed there. Is that, to Councilman Saunders' point, because I'm trying to get there, too. If the traffic study comes back, similar to what we just did on 86, is that something that council could do after we receive the traffic study?
Yes.
I think that's, is that...
That helps.
That helps, because I think, I think sometimes, the birthday guy taught me this, sometimes we push so much on our attorney, but I think what we recently did could be done once we receive the traffic study. Councilman Vogler, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. I just had a couple more. Well, through the manager, can you get information in terms of the daytime traffic in Danville 10 years ago? Daytime traffic in Danville today? And the anticipated daytime traffic in Danville based on the first 10 and the second 10 years? I feel certain it's going to show growth, and I would like to know how that growth is trending. I know we have our census done every 10 years, but in terms of our city, we all know it's growing, okay? So how is it growing? In population, in income, okay, in taxes, in other investments? There are so many indicators that a city is growing or not growing, and I would like to know what those indicators are. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Vogler. Yeah, if I could, I have some other things I want to jump in, but I want to try to finish up this thought chain that's been going on. The second vote that you're referring to after the traffic study that comes back, unless I, and if I'm wrong, please let me know. To me, that vote will allow council to address the concern about the cul-de-sac, letting the traffic go through or not go through, correct? That's what that vote would essentially be on. The vote tonight is whether we want this project to move forward or not. Council gets another opportunity to come back after the traffic study and decide if the traffic study says the cul-de-sac's not a good idea. Council can say, okay, we liked the project, obviously, but we don't want the cul-de-sac. You have to do this. All that comes, if we approve this tonight, we still get the opportunity to address all of that, correct?
Essentially, yes.
So to me, I hope we vote on this tonight. I know sometimes, and I love this council, you guys know that, sometimes when anything a little bit difficult comes up, we have this tendency to just kick it down the road a little bit and table it. And I hope we don't do that tonight. We have an opportunity to, again, address what seems to be the major concern when this comes back to us after this traffic study. What approving it tonight lets the developer know that, by and large, and again, that's what I've heard from the bulk of folks who've given feedback, is we need a project like this, and we support a project like this. I think we're able to address the concerns if we want to when that other vote comes up. And if I've said something wrong, let me know.
I'm glad you mentioned it, because I wanted to hear from the attorney. Because, Lee, I like the way, and I got to tell you, Lee, I'm on the same page with you. I don't want to table anything. But Clark, to Lee's point, he asked it to Doug, but I think it should have been directed to you.
Yeah, I mean, if...
Is your mic on? Your mic on?
It seems to be.
Okay, good.
It's lighting up red everywhere.
Yeah.
They're going to, if they want to put a building in the middle of the street, you're going to have to abandon that portion of the street, or not abandon that portion of the street. The other thing is, this is a special use permit. It's not a rezoning. It's a special use permit, which allows you all to put conditions on this development. One of those, I don't want to, one of those conditions could be that they follow through and tell you how they're going to follow through with the traffic study, how they're going to solve those problems, if there are problems that come up with the traffic study, and that they will, and that the building won't, that the complex or the building, building or project won't be built except according to the recommendations of the traffic study. So there, there are a number of things you can do, since it's a special use permit, and you can put those conditions on, then you can kind of move it on down the road, and then, again, if they do indeed want to have the city to abandon some of that property, they'll have to come back and ask for that property to be abandoned, be a completely different type of decision that you would make. But it also, because you're giving away or selling or abandoning city property, would also require a public hearing that would be advertised.
Thank you. And to me, again, that alleviates what I've heard the concern is, and we would have an opportunity, for those who wish to, to potentially address that later on. My last point, Mayor, if I can, real quick. Ken, there was a housing study done by the city, what, 2016, maybe, that showed at that time a somewhat dire need for housing in the city, particularly the area around the hospital. Am I right in that?
Yes, I believe you're speaking to the CZB study. I think it was done around that time, 2015 or so, 2014. And it did identify that as a potential area for investment in housing.
And so that, it showed a need for housing then, long before Caesar's was ever thought of and into the equation, long before what the institute just mentioned earlier tonight, and all the other growth and development that's happened. So if it was a huge need then, it is certainly a huge need now. Again, I'm ready to vote on it tonight, and I hope that that's what we do, Mayor. Thank you.
With you. Councilman Saunders want to piggyback off that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I apologize to you and the council for this back and forth. You know, I want to support this project. The planning commission said, depending upon the traffic study. Mr. Counselor, and my, all due respect to you, sir, to my question, will we get a second bite at the apple? And that was the essence of it. And I heard you say, no. Mr. Vogler just asked the same question, using a different word, and I heard you say yes. So I'm confused.
Clark, let's do this, Clark. Let's, let's do it the same way we did the planning commission, to Councilman Saunders' point. Can, will, can we do, we as a council have the opportunity to do the same thing pending the traffic study as the planning commission did? Is that...
Yes, sir.
Yes or no?
Yes, sir.
I thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. So I think council needs to remember, the planning commission stated yes with the predication of the...
Traffic study.
Speaking to the microphone.
Traffic study.
Which is, I'm with council, Councilman Vogler, I'm with you, which we can do the same thing. Councilman Miller, Campbell, Hood, and Buckner, and then I'm going to call for the vote. Councilman Miller, Campbell, Hood, Miller.
Yeah, I don't have, the project itself, you know, I recognize the need, the students and residents that work at the hospital, they need housing. My concern is the... My concern is the ingress and egress. Number one, the cul-de-sac. I was, when I met with Mr. Gould earlier, I understood there'd be an emergency exit or exit grid open. A few years ago, if you'll remember, about five or six in Connecticut, I think, people were trapped in their housing complex with the fire at the front of the housing complex, and they had no way out, because they had no exit, no in and out thing. So, I think the traffic study needs to show, have an emergency exit at the very least. And if you put the building on the street, I'm not sure where that's gonna be. Secondly, I challenge anybody in this room to drive down Stewart Street and come up upon West Main and Stewart and try to make a left turn. Okay? At thirty miles an hour, you have a car to stop forty-four feet or six car lengths. That's just above the speed limit. Nobody goes twenty-five on Main. I did that the other day, and almost got hit by a truck. I couldn't see till my car was halfway out in the road. Okay, there's, it's a blind turn, left turn out of there. It's only gonna get worse. At forty miles an hour, if they're speeding, you got fifty-nine feet or nine car lengths for that car can stop without hitting you. There is no sight on that street. You're gonna have to totally redo that intersection. Or, you know, people park along that street, and it's blind, believe me. Coming up off Central Avenue and turning left to the hospital is also a turkey shoot, whether you can get across there without getting hit by people coming down left, West Main. It is a blind intersection, not as bad as coming out of Funeral Home Exit. So, I think the traffic study is imperative, that something needs to be done there. I'm not sure Traffic Light's gonna solve this problem, because it's gonna back up people down the ramp, but you can't leave that intersection like it is. It's dangerous right now, much less if you put all those extra cars coming out of Stewart Street. So, I think some work needs to be done. You know, we're gonna, if we approve this tonight, we've approved the project, and then, you know, I think the traffic study needs to be seen. You know, what is it gonna show? What, are the developers willing to go along with the traffic study and make major changes? Because you're gonna have to make some major changes in that intersection, and you need an exit strategy to get out of the place in case of emergency. And I know Mr. Gould showed a rescue squad vehicle, but he didn't show a fire truck. It takes a lot more space to get a fire truck in and out of there on that little road than a rescue squad, an ambulance. So, I'm disappointed you didn't mention that tonight, but there's gotta be an exit out of there in case of emergencies. It's got to be. Oh, God.
I think, once again, the planning commission stated, they approved it with, Clark, tell us about the traffic study.
It's contingent, their approval was contingent on the completion of the traffic study.
Council, remember, there has, we can put that in there as well, there has to be a traffic study, so...
This motion?
We got a point of order there.
Have that, or do we have to have a implicit motion that says, or does this one already cover that?
I think it does not include that, based on the way I read the motion, so that would be something you would add to the motion.
Dr. Miller called upon an order, hold it, Lee.
Yeah, question, so, in other words, I don't understand how this is gonna go. We don't wait till the traffic study, we just approve it, they can start building.
Blindly. No, that's my argument, Mr. Mayor.
No.
No, 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 no.
The traffic's, Clark, Dr. Miller called upon an order, his question is, can they start building without the traffic study?
Not if you put the specific condition on the special use permit that construction cannot begin until after the completion of a traffic study.
Dr. Miller, you satisfied?
I make that motion.
Yes, you can. You can make it right now if you wanted to, because I think, so, we got, anything else, Dr. Miller?
No.
Councilman Campbell?
Yes, one quick question. We seem, after having several phone calls and reading the material, it may seem too simplistic, why wasn't, or we couldn't have a traffic study before tonight?
I can't answer that, I think the...
But that seems like to be the major concern.
It seemed to be the major concern.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Hood?
It was a few things that I just had questions about. One is for the viewers and people online to know exactly what a cul-de-sac is that may not know. I think that's something that needs to be addressed. And as far as the effect, if I'm not mistaken, if you come through West Main through Stewart Street, currently now, you can make it all the way through Watson, correct?
That's correct.
And you still have residents on that end of Watson?
I think there's some residents or some buildings on...
How would it impact or infect them? How would it affect them, if any way?
They would, they would not, if it, if the, if it goes forward as proposed, then they would only have the option to leave, to exit their neighborhood from Watson, they wouldn't be able to go through Stewart.
Okay, and I guess the other thing, too, was just that, speaking about that, as exiting on Washington, could that be a one-way to exit out? Maybe they can't, maybe they could come in from West Main, but exit through Watson. Watson can't come in that way, but would that be something? And back to the cul-de-sac, again, if it can be explained why it would sit in the center of the street, for those who did not know about it.
Ken, while you're speaking on that, Councilman Hood said that he wants you to explain a cul-de-sac to those persons who were made Washington dead-end cul-de-sac.
Yep, so, for those who aren't familiar with traffic terms and street terms, cul-de-sac is typically where a street dead-ends, and then there's a kind of a bubble, like a, where people can turn around and come back the other direction. So, it's a dead-end street, basically, that's what a cul-de-sac is. You can have a dead-end street that doesn't have a cul-de-sac that just ends, but the cul-de-sac is actually a round area, which gives a vehicle enough movement to be able to turn around without doing, you know, a three-point turn. Exactly, that's the term I was looking for. The, I think there was a second question related to...
Just the placing of it, but I understand, I think I got the answer, too, I wanted to find out the effect of the citizens that's at the end of the street.
Sure, I think that, you said something about, suggested some solutions potentially to the, which way the traffic should or shouldn't go. I would say that probably the best option would be for a professional to take a look at, you know, with the results of a traffic study, to make a recommendation on the way the traffic should be handled in that area, that would be the best way, rather than folks trying to figure it out here that don't have the traffic engineering experience to do that.
Anything else, Councilman Hood? I'm calling for, Dr. Miller, you mentioned you want to, it's, the motion is on the floor, and we've been on this for now.
Amendment, I guess you'd like to amend the amendment.
Yes, Dr. Miller, go ahead. Go ahead, you want to make the amendment, Dr. Miller?
Okay, I'm sorry, I just, I want this to be clear, though, real quick, and I'm sorry, Mayor, if I can't.
That's okay.
The cul-de-sac, which seems to be the big issue, right? The cul-de-sac cannot be built until we have a second vote, correct? The cul-de-sac can't be done, because we have to abandon the street, which is a separate vote.
That's correct, yes.
All projects should wait until we have a traffic study.
I just want to reiterate the condition, the, well, a couple, let me just go through the ten conditions the planning commission recommended, because I haven't heard them read outside tonight. Number one, the permitted uses of the development are residential. Number two, thirty-five percent of the building exteriors will be masonry. Number three, the buildings will not have vinyl siding on exterior vertical fascia. Four, the development will have sidewalk connectivity to West Main Street. Number five, and this is the crux of the current debate, the developer will complete a traffic impact analysis in consultation with the city and implement the recommendations.
Well, stop, stop, stop. So, we've been having all this conversation, is that what we are voting on tonight, Clark?
Since it's not in the motion, I would, for suspenders and belt, I would require that all the conditions of the planning commission be made special conditions of this special use permit.
What does that mean?
That everything he's reading and going to read become part of this motion, that if you say with all the conditions required by the planning commission, then those would be required.
Sounds good. You on number six?
Six, real quick, the development will not exceed twenty-five dwelling units per acre. The development must meet all ingress and egress requirements of the building and fire codes. The development includes amenities for residents, including a clubhouse and swimming pool. The development will maintain landscape buffers compliant with Article sixteen of the zoning ordinance, and the developer executes and records a development agreement with the city that acknowledges these conditions.
Councilman Buckner?
Yeah, Mayor, much to the dismay of some of my fellow council members, I'm gonna make a motion that we table this until the traffic study comes back and we have time to review it.
Excuse me? As the motion on the floor, is there a second? Is there a second? Is there a second? Is there a second? The motion is on the floor, the table, is there a second? Motion dies. Motion dies. Councilman Whittle, you hit your hand up?
Yeah, please. With what Planning Director said, that those should, are part of the package, what he just read, so, again, we've gotta have the study. He's gonna do what's required as, as council would agree through the planning commission.
Would you like to add that into the motion? Would you like to add that into the motion that's on the floor?
Mayor, would this be done, the study would be done before they start?
Exactly, that's what was stated by the attorney. Would you like to add that into the motion? Yes. Is there a second?
Me.
Second by Councilman Vogler. What's added into the motion, Mr. Attorney, explain what we're voting on. It was just added to the motion to the planning commission.
Okay, I need to backtrack and say I was incorrect. Those ten items are part of the ordinance.
That's what we thought, so it's already in there.
So, they are already in there, and I apologize for the confusion.
Okay, let's go, you're human. So, we're back to the original motion, it's been, first has been seconded, Madam Clerk, we're back to the original motion. Clark, share with everyone the original motion that was on the, that's on the floor, that's been first and seconded, and that original motion is what?
To grant a special use to this project, subject to the ten conditions that Mr. Plachinsky just read, that include uses as residential uses only, thirty-five percent of the building exteriors must be masonry, the building may not have vinyl siding or exterior...
Just read number five.
Number five is the developer will complete a traffic analysis in consultation with the city and implementation of those recommendations.
Thank you, Mr. Attorney.
Mr. Mayor, at what point would that be done?
Do we need to specify that? Do we need to specify that?
I don't, I don't thi, I'm not, I don't think a building permit can be issued until those conditions are satisfied.
So, the Councilman Campbell's question is, it can't be done until the building permit is issued?
That's my understanding.
Very good. Did I ask you a question, Councilman?
Yes, sir.
Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Mr. Mayo?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Saunders?
Aye.
Mr. Vogler?
Aye.
Mr. Whittle?
Aye.
Mr. Buckner?
I don't feel comfortable doing it until the traffic study comes back. I'm a hundred percent for the project, but it just doesn't make sense without the traffic study, no.
Reverend Campbell?
Aye.
Mr. Hood?
Aye.
Mayor Jones?
Yes. Mr. Walden, could you and your family stand up, please? I want to commend you all, we want to commend you all for what you're doing in this community, being from this community, and I know you've been through this several times before, but I, on behalf of council, on behalf of the citizens of this city, just want to say thank you so much, thank you so much, thank you. Thank you. Under item B, consideration of amending the Danville City Code to add a new chapter entitled Outdoor Refreshment Area, Councilman Vogler?
Yes, Mayor, and I wish it could start tonight. I'd like to make a motion that we adopt an ordinance amending and reordaining the code of the City of Danville, Virginia, nineteen eighty-six, as amended to add a new chapter twenty-three point two, entitled Outdoor Refreshment Area.
Second by Dr. Miller, discussion of the motion?
Start it tonight.
I wish.
Madam Clerk, call the roll, Council, State Attorney.
Until, until they had actually voted in public, I didn't want to reveal it, but the Danville Development Council, who is a five-oh-one-C four and helps support this council in economic development in a number of ways, has agreed to be the license holder, and once you all do this tonight, then things will get started with ABC to get that license done, and once that license is issued, then we'll be able to implement this plan.
Thank you, Mr. Attorney. Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Mr. Saunders?
Aye.
Mr. Vogler?
Aye.
Mr. Whittle?
No.
Mr. Buckner?
Aye.
Reverend Campbell?
Aye.
Mr. Hood?
Hold on, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. There is no, there is no public comments, yeah, there's no public comments, so continue. Sorry, was no public, go ahead, Mr. Clerk.
Mr. Hood?
Aye.
Aye.
Mayor Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Mayo?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Aye.
Sir, what I was trying to say, there was no public hearing for this, that's why we, under item E, consideration of updates to the city's financial policy, council, what's your pleasure? Councilman Buckner?
May I like to make a motion that we approve a resolution approving and amending the City of Danville's financial policies to change them to nine point two edited City of Danville standards of Section Nine, entitled Debt Management, to allow for the school bonds funds by the one percent local sales tax option.
Second by Councilman Mayo, discussion of the motion. Madam Clerk, if you would, call the roll, please.
Mr. Vogler?
Aye.
Mr. Whittle?
Aye.
Mr. Buckner?
Aye.
Reverend Campbell?
Aye.
Mr. Hood?
Aye.
Mayor Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Mayo?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Saunders?
Aye.
Under item F, consideration of a moral obligation with the Virginia Community Capital, Campbell?
May I move from adopting a motion, resolution authorizing approval execution of moral obligation agreement by the, between the City of Danville, Virginia, Virginia Community Capital and Virginia Banking Corporation?
Is there a second? Second by Councilman Buckner, discussion of the motion?
I got some questions.
Councilman Whittle?
Someone, can someone just bring me up to speed on that, please?
So, let me make sure. So, she just happens to be walking in at the moment, so...
Corey, we're asking you to come to the podium.
While she's getting ready, this, and I believe she'll explain this to us, but this is necessary in order for the IDA to move forward with a loan related to a building that we own that requires improvements in Airside Industrial Park, and I will turn the rest over to Corey to be more specific.
Good evening.
Hi, good evening.
We had the question, Madison had a question on item F, the consideration of moral obligation with the Virginia Community Capital.
Might just get brought up to speed on it?
Sure, absolutely. So, last summer, the Industrial Development Authority purchased one EComnet's Way, which is the first building on the right-hand side when you enter into, sorry, I ran upstairs, so I apologize for being out of breath, as you enter into Airside Industrial Park. This was a cash purchase, and so, and working with a prospective tenant for the site, this loan with Virginia Community Capital will help cover the outfit expenses related to that tenant, as well as allow us to reimburse ourselves for that cash purchase and amortize mortgage over that twenty-year period.
Three or four percent? Was it a three or four percent loan?
Uh, three point eight.
Thank you. Anything else?
Yes, that's all.
Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Mr. Whittle?
Yes.
Mr. Buckner?
Yes.
Reverend Campbell?
Aye.
Mr. Hood?
Aye.
Mayor Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Mayo?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Saunders?
Yes.
Mr. Vogler?
Yes.
Consideration of amending the fiscal year twenty-twenty-two budget appropriation ordinance for a Byrne Memorial Justice Assistant Grant, council, what's your, Councilman Buckner?
May I like to make a motion that we approve an ordinance amending the fiscal year twenty-twenty-two budget appropriation ordinance by increasing revenue from the Virginia Criminal Justice Service Board for the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant, JAG, program, award in the amount of seventy-five thousand dollars, with a local share in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars, to be used to strengthen the Youth Justice Division program.
Second by Councilman Mayo, first reading, Councilman Saunders?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Manager, what is the Youth Justice Diversion Program? Now, I asked that question when you have Project Imagine, WW Moore Detention Home, you got a lot of youth program. So by this name, what is the Youth Justice Diversion Program?
This, and I'll ask for maybe some help here, but if I'm incorrectly answering this question, but this program here would set up the ability for instead of a young person who might be facing time in WW Moore, that they would have the opportunity to have a peer court system where young people would actually evaluate the situation and provide an alternative to incarceration for young people. And, and so that, this is what that program is, and it's something that staff has worked on as a way to keep young people from going right to WW Moore if they have certain infractions. So it's a peer-reviewed resolution to a variety of circumstances that, you know, without this program in place, they would likely end up in the juvenile detention center.
Well, if I may, Mr. Mayor, is this akin to Project Imagine?
I don't think so. I think it's a layer on top of that. I mean, certainly.
Could they be combined as one and let Project Imagine do the whole thing with the money, or that the law itself says you can't do it?
I think it's two separate things, in my opinion, at this moment. And not that they couldn't work together and have some commonalities, but I believe that this particular program is different from Project Imagine, where Project Imagine is more of a program to, to get referrals from the community for young people who are at risk and provide them with job training and opportunities to get a job and learn what it's like to be in the work environment. And this is more about people, our young people who have been, I guess, arrested for some sort of infraction, usually minor, and have that resolved through a peer system rather than through the court system.
Okay, last question, Mr. Mayor. So I'm familiar with the juvenile, the Justice Assistance Grant. I'm familiar with that. Is this a new program?
Would be new for Danville. But I don't think it's new for, I think it's things like this.
No, I mean, the new for Danville.
Yes, I believe it is new for Danville.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Just to make sure. We've, we've received really good advice and feedback from other areas that have implemented similar programs and have shown that those have been successful in those areas.
Get Councilman Mayo excited.
So to piggyback off what Councilman Saunders is saying, is that it's, it's, it's to keep the, the youth from being incarcerated, that's, this is the second alternative to being incarcerated and to complete it instead of going to jail.
That's, yes, and there could be, and it doesn't necessarily, it might not just be incarceration, just some sort of punishment that would occur, including incarceration, but any sort, this is an alternative to that, those kinds of punishment for young people that could give them an opportunity to have a chance at, you know, a more successful outcome than what is currently available. So it's an alternative, and I think the victim, my understanding, and Earl's the expert on this, and he could jump in anytime to help, or, but the, the victim has to agree to this peer resolution to whatever issue has arise. I'm trying to, I'm not trying to be vague that it could be a variety of things. That's why I'm saying it that way. And so they have to agree that there, that whatever the results of the peer court are will be implemented, and, and so, and it's worked well in other communities, but yes, it's a diversionary tool.
You good? I would like to see this work with Project Imagine, because Councilman Saunders had a great point. We were with Project Imagine, Barry Tom, and, and it sounds like, I don't know what the federal and state laws are, but if this, any kind of way can work toward with Project Imagine, I'd like to see that happen. Back to you, Councilman Saunders, I think you want to.
Yes, sir. I think I'm agreeing with you. The program is new to Danville. Will it require additional personnel? And did we have to write a grant for this, or was it just a gift?
We wrote a grant.
Grant for?
Yes, sir. If, if I can digress just a couple of steps. This grant was actually written for Project Imagine. So, several years ago, the General Assembly was asked to pass legislation to allow an alternative through the juvenile court, other than the strict penal processing of young people who had misbehaved. No such legislation existed in Virginia at that time. We supported that legislation, and it was ultimately, you know, through our legislative partners, of course, Delegate Marshall was involved and others, that legislation was passed, signed by the governor and NASLO. So communities can develop with, in partnership with the juvenile court system, a program alternatives to young people coming before the judge. That's why they call it peer review and peer court. The one that we are most familiar with, that is actually operating, is, is in Newport News. So it, it was our intent, working through the juvenile court, as well as the school system and other partners, to set up a similar experience for the young people here, where they would go through a, a peer experience, and it's voluntary, that they go through a peer experience, hopefully to learn that their particular behavior or whatever was not appropriate, and their peers helped them in the process of correcting that behavior with professional supervision. Now, somebody's got to operate the program. The program will be operated out of Robert Davis' office.
So, Mr. Mayor, I apologize for all the time. I'm just trying to understand, that's all. So we're talking, we're talking about $100,000, is that correct?
Well, we're talking about a $75,000 grant.
Oh, well, combined, 25 from the state, 25 from us. Okay, so will this require any new personnel? I may have asked that before, I don't know.
No, sir.
Okay. And will this require any stipends to the young people?
No, sir.
Okay, the manager says something to the fact of the person that was violated against would be involved in some way. How?
That's part of the program design is that if Councilman Whittle and I got in an altercation, and it was determined that I initiated it, well, then Councilman Whittle, we want him to be involved in my reclamation. Okay? It will be difficult for us to remain in the community together, in school together, if we can't live together. If we can't get over that situation that created the altercation. Can I piggyback off that? Yes. I like that because a lot of times, Councilman Whittle, I could talk about this one all night, Councilman Whittle was a person that was bullied, and then he ended up, he got him involved because the long-term effect is Councilman Whittle was in his lane, minding his business, but he got assaulted, or whatever the case may be, and it's still having an effect on him of why this happened. So you're bringing this in where you can actually mediate and resolve these issues so that Councilman Whittle don't tell Councilman Hood, it still bothers me, and I want to do something to him. Right. Very good. Thank you. I, I, I want to say to the city manager, you're the city manager, and thank you for Councilman Saunders, this was really good for me, Councilman Mayo. What you're doing with the budget in regards to our focus on youth, this is huge, and I just wanted, I wish we could have talked about this more, because this is huge, and thank you so much. It was first reading. Communication, city manager?
I have nothing this evening, thank you.
Um, city, deputy city manager?
Uh, nothing. Thank you, sir.
City attorney?
Uh, yes, sir. I had a, a visit today from a gentleman by the name of Tim Garland. A lot of people listening may know, Tim made me feel old, because he's a little bit younger than me, when he told me that he had been involved in Major League Baseball now for the last 32 years. And I think this, this is really big. The American League won the World Series last year, so they, Dusty Baker will be coaching the American League team, and has asked Tim Garland of Danville, a 1988 graduate of GW, to be one of the coaches in the Major League All-Star Game this summer, and he is possibly interested in doing some youth work in the offseason with our Parks and Rec, and I've helped connect them. But I thought it was kind of, I thought it was really big that a, a Danville guy is going to be on Dusty Baker's Hall of Fame manager, Hall of Fame managers' coaching staff, representing the Detroit Tigers.
Appreciate you saying that, recognizing, that's good stuff. City clerk? Roll call, please.
Mr. Buckner?
Yeah, I just want to thank everyone tonight for their input. These are the things that we do. I appreciate the council for your candor in hearing me out, and appreciate the way you all voted. I'm 100% in support of this thing, like I've said from the beginning, and I, and I look forward to what the Waldens are going to do for our area. It's a very exciting project, no doubt, and just would look forward to seeing what the traffic study says as well. Thank you all. Thank you to everyone who came out tonight, and I really appreciate it. Have a great night.
Reverend Campbell?
Nothing.
Mr. Hood?
Yes, again, I just want to give a special shout out again to Amari Harrell for being our shooting star here and setting example for our youth. 1,400 points was, is a lot of scoring, and to also keep her grade point average where she was, I think that's something that needs to be, you know, echoed once again. Also, to the certificate of recognition for the Danville Alumni Chapter Delta Sigma Theta Sorority, and for Black Brand Danville Region, Dan River Region, for their SWAM Strong Procurement Fair that's held again on April 26th, from 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. at the Institute for Advanced Learning.
You.
Mr. Mayo?
Thank you. A special shout out to Black Brand also, and along with Amari for her accomplishments, not only on the court, but academically, and to the council for what we do to make these decisions. It's, it's, it's a decision that has to entail all of us. It's good when you can hear one another, and my thinking is when I can see how you're thinking, because the way I'm thinking, I'm hoping going the right way with it. But to, to that right there, and then Councilman Buckner, your, your, your decision was your decision, and we, we do respect that. But to see Danville grow, to see what's going to come and happening, I think we all can say to each other that that's what we want, but we just want things done the right way to all, with all citizens are satisfied. Sure, we're not going to satisfy everyone, but at least we are candid to making decisions to hope that it's better in Danville. Thank you.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Yeah, again, want to recognize our city manager for his sixth year anniversary being the city manager.
Dr. Miller, I thought you said that was his birthday.
Tommy Bennett, congratulations, beyond the planning commission. It's not too late to back out after tonight's session, if you want. You're ready.
No, he's not.
The school superintendent, she left, but I was, if you noticed last week, the announcement, we, this year, we had 283 more students in our system than last year. So we're growing. We, a lot of us predicted that, that things were changing, and a lot of them were drawn by the virtual academy, but that means people that were in other schools decided to come to Danville's school system. 283 new students. The, this week, we had a, or last Tuesday, anniversary or sort of sorts at the hospital, we had, they had a breakfast to celebrate the first time in over two years, there was not a single COVID patient in the hospital. Since March 3rd, 2020, there have been anywhere from 10 to 50 or 60 COVID patients hospitalized. Last week, there were none. That doesn't mean we're through with this. You know, we've had 25,000 cases, 475 deaths in the, in the area, and I told you, we're still seeing long COVID cases, and I saw a lady yesterday who had COVID, and she's still having trouble. She got two vaccines, didn't get the booster, about the time Omicron had, so she got a COVID, but she's not that sick. On the converse, her husband refused to get the vaccine, and he died. So if you never want a controlled study, same house, man and wife, no vaccine died, vaccine survived. Please get your boosters. And I think that's all I've got to say.
Thank you.
Mr. Saunders?
Another, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Mr. Vogler?
One quick point, and then I'm gonna end with something else. I just, I've had, and this is not a, a new development, I've had folks reach out to me about this for, for quite some time, and, and there may be other streets in, in the city that, that have similar issues, but I did want to bring up tonight, Canterbury Road, there's concern by a number of the residents on that street about folks speeding constantly through that street. And I, I think maybe I've even asked in the past, and I think maybe we even had an officer there from time to time to try to, to tamp it down some. But I, I would ask if we could have staff at least look into, I don't know if a study has been done, or, or, you know, something to, to evaluate if speed bumps or something of that nature would be suitable for that street, because I know it's a, it's an area that has a lot of young families, of course, it's close to a school nearby, and so I just, I get awfully concerned when you hear, and I've seen it actually myself, but folks driving incredibly too fast up and down that street, when there's young children out playing and, and people trying to get in and out of their car. And so I, I would just ask staff if we could at least look at Canterbury Road and, and see what's going on there, and see if it would be suitable to implement some safety measures there. And the last thing, so Ken, it is your birthday this evening, correct? Quite the birthday. First of all, happy birthday, and, and I'd like to ask us to do something, I don't know if we've ever done this in here before, but I, I'd like to sing "Happy Birthday."
I can't sing.
I would like for you and Dr. Miller to do the.
No, don't, don't leave me hanging, I ain't doing it alone now.
(singing) Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear kid. Happy birthday to you.
Happy anniversary, too. That's all I have.
And many more.
Mr. Whittle?
Yes, we had an interesting meeting tonight. But I had a, I had a good meeting on the budget today with, with Ken and Councilman Mayo. But it was sort of more drilling down on the school system, which was, which is important, and, and it was just more, not, not on our budget, but it was on what we're going to do to step in and where we can help lift that system up and, and work towards a better outcome. And, you know, I would, I asked Ken, I said, just get it down to a few things, and, because he gets it from both barrels, he gets it from council, and he gets it from the superintendent and, and their, their elected body, and, you know, and I, and I hope he'll share a few of the things with council that he shared with us, because it was, if he's, if he's doing the same thing with Councilman Mayo and I, then it shouldn't take but three or four other meetings to get it really nailed down where we can get together with them on a comprehensive budget that's satisfying to both sides. It's a good meeting for me. And, you know, I, I did, I did vote no on drinking the booze in the street. I guess it's, I figured if you want to do it, you do it in your house or in a bar. But again, I, I had several people reach out to me that were opposed to it, and, you know, it passed, so you, you don't want them all. Thank you.
Thank you. Patrina, I want to thank you for being here tonight, because after this, they need a free lunch, so on April the 26th, at 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., Black Brand is sponsored by SWAM. You can call 434-421-5040. I'm not going to prolong it, because we've been here a long time. There's one thing I want to say publicly to Councilman Saunders, and I want to say this publicly, a couple of weeks ago, we, we haven't had council meeting for a couple of weeks now, and there was an incident that occurred on the Oscars. And when the young man smacked, when Will Smith smacked Chris Rock, something happened to me in watching that, and I want to say thank you. happened to me in watching that, and I want to say thank you, and what happened to me was when Denzel Washington and Tyler Perry went over to speak to Will Smith, that leadership, I remember here in the chambers, because people never know what people go through, and I remember here in the chambers, an incident where the best of me almost lost out of me, and you walked over there, Denzel, and you said to me, you work too hard, and you poured your wisdom into me, and you did not know that I, the breaking point that I was at towards that individual, and I want to sincerely say, after watching that, thank you, sir, this meeting is adjourned.